Many people in this room remember the days of Jim Singleton and Peggy Wilson, really department heads, line item by line item by line item. Budget meetings that could sometimes last for two days. In 2005, the city had 503,000 people and a $500 million budget. Today, the city has 380,000 people and an over $700 million budget. One of our mayoral candidates has called people in the city walking ATMs. How would you use your position on the city council to demand accountability for the budget? To ask those detailed questions? And then the second half of that in terms of the budget is, I remember when council members used to have a capital budget in their districts, district members, for streets and capital projects. For the last seven, eight years, council members have no capital budgets for their districts at all. Is that something you think is appropriate? And how would you fix that?
That was a couple of questions. So, how would I fix it? I think the first thing is to actually do with the obvious. Like you said, for two days, they itemize that budget line by line. That is one thing. I think we take for granted the fact that the budget is so large. And everybody feel like it's a part of whatever we want to spend it on. Because we haven't been as close-knit and knowledgeable far as the city council goes with the budget. I think one of the things is, we didn't ask the right questions. Are we gonna increase taxes because of what the mayor wants? We don't ask those type of questions. We don't ask questions that pertain to what needs to be said.
City Charter, Article 5, Chapter 1, Section 6-108, says that every year, the city council has to contract with someone to perform an independent audit of every single dollar that's spent. The council and the mayor have flat out refused to do this the entire time they've been in here. And we've had TV stations, we've had the LENS, we've had WWL trying their best to get audit information, and the city's just not doing it. Why should we even be talking about a budget when we haven't been given proof of where the money went in the first place? And that's just flat out, if you went to a bank, they wouldn't give you money if you couldn't show them where you got your money from, which you're spending on to begin with. Why should we be doing the same? Fact is that, you know, we can't trust the people who spend the money to write the budgets. And that's one of my proposals, is we bring in a third from a government, municipal assembly, about 100 people, whose sole job is yes or no. The council wouldn't get to prove, the mayor wouldn't get to prove, this independent entity would. And basically, we have to have independence, and we have to have transparency. But, Aileen, we have to just follow the laws we have.
As I mentioned before, there's budget hearings going on right now. There are, you know, anywhere between three weeks to two months of budget hearings. There is a robust process that starts in the summer usually, but it didn't happen this year. And during those budget hearings, in each and every department, there's, you know, many, many questions asked. I can say that, you know, having been the staff member who drafted a lot of those questions, sometimes they get answered, sometimes they don't. If I was elected to the council, I would be very insistent that my questions get answered, that I get the information on the budget in advance. Because what happens is, you get the budget presentation the evening before the next budget hearing. Well, that's not acceptable to me. You have staff members up until midnight every night trying to prepare for the next day, when you have, you know what your budget is gonna be by the summertime. So I would insist that that information be given timely in advance to allow council members and their staff to prepare. It's not happening now, and I would demand it.
The biggest problem is you have an 800-page budget, and you can't tell where the dollars are going. And if you look at what happens right now, we know from this year, the mayor's budget increased, the CEO's budget increased, and the finance department's budget increased. And I think finance increased by almost $9 million. Why is that? And I think the questions have to be asked on the front end, when you see different line items that are going up, not just by a little bit to accommodate what is happening, but to see large increases of millions of dollars across different constituencies and different areas throughout city government. And we also know that there are more pressing needs that may be spent on streets and infrastructure, and making sure the catch basins are being cleaned properly. And so far as the capital budget is concerned, I would recommend having money that could be spent by the district council people, but also making sure that we're following the street plan that was already designed, to ensure that there is certainty in how the streets are being done, to ensure that there's accountability for being done, also making sure that one area of the city is not being favored over another.
When we balance our budgets in our homes, we don't just let it go lax. We make sure that our checks are always balanced, we make sure that money's coming in, and if it's going out, we know where it's going. That's how you do them, balance budget in your home. We need to do that at the government level. We need to make sure that what we're spending is what we need to spend it on. If it's not, we need to change it. Whether it's changing the law, changing the way we do the budgetary oversight, whether it be forcing these people that are writing these sections of budget to give us more time to oversight it, that's what we need to do. Plain and simple, hot and dry. As far as, you know, as far as the each individual, budgetary of each individual district, sure, let's do that. Keep us responsible for how we spend our money in our district. We're here charged for running the city. Let's run the city. Let's run the city at a community level in each neighborhood, and we can go from there.
I believe that one of the reasons why we're in the situation we're in is because our budgeting for outcomes process is not producing the outcomes. And we aren't actually engaging the citizens all year long. We aren't engaging the departments all year long. We're waiting for budget time. And I believe that if we had budgeting for outcome take place all year long, maybe quarterly, maybe even monthly, we wouldn't have these problems. We would be anticipating these issues far before budget season. And in terms of capital projects and the capital budget for city council members, again, city council members in our district, for instance, over the last 16 years, I remember, we've been promised that we would have district-wide meetings. That still has not materialized, and we need to do it soon.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for hanging in there. I have one more question, and then Charles will have the last one. We're actually staying on time, so thanks for staying in your time, and hopefully we'll have one or two from the audience. Mr. Ward, you're next, and you've already mentioned your support for narrowing the property tax exemptions for nonprofits. I'd like to know from the rest of you, your position on that. For those of you who've mentioned it already, how would you pursue that when your predecessors on the council have not been able to do it? And if you oppose it, please explain why you don't think it's a good idea. So again, starting with Mr. Ward.
It hasn't been that the city council's been unwilling to do something, or the mayor are unable, it's been unwilling. The fact is, as long as we keep putting people on city council and mayor who eventually want to be something else, they want to be in state government, they want to be in federal government, they're not gonna be willing to step on toes or to really make people mad. And the fact is, it's a fight we'll have to have. It requires constitutional change. But the reality is that we have a constitutional legitimate reason for doing that. In 1972, when the Constitution was written, it was actually done so that a lot of the things that are basically paid for, funded, you know, at the local level, were at the time done at the state level. So a local assessor would still assess, you'd still collect taxes, he would remit them to Baton Rouge, and then Baton Rouge would don't let him back out. So it made sense for the state to be the ones regulating that. None of that happens anymore. Currently, the legislature still regulates, they give away all our money, but they leave no hand whatsoever in getting revenues, in spending revenues, or anything else like that. So there's a good constitutional reason to have it divested off again.
Any constitutional changes generally go through a constitutional conference process. Right now, all we have is a report from, you know, one organization making a recommendation on this, an organization that also recommended to remove the council from the sewage and water board. So I don't know that we can make this change just based on, you know, one group's recommendation. I think that it's something worth looking at and studying further. I'm not opposed to making changes or putting forth, you know, charter amendments or constitutional amendments where necessary, and let the voters decide. But when we're talking about property tax exemption, and, you know, that's also a federal issue, and what people are allowed to exempt for the mission of their nonprofit status, there's a process under the IRS that if you're not using your property according to what you're supposed to be, that can be challenged under federal statute.
They answered the question. I believe those nonprofit exemptions should start being eroded, and I think there's a couple of different things that need to be done. Number one is, we need to start working with our New Orleans delegation to make it a priority for all of us, because as I said earlier, it's completely backwards that we pay and collect more in sales tax by almost $80 million that we do in property tax. Number two is, I think you have to go sell it. You have to explain to people what is happening and why it's happening. And so if you can go to people and you say to them, of the nonprofit parcels that are being operated commercially, that are lying fallow, or that are being used even partially commercially, how much more money does that add to the tax rolls, number one? Then number two, how much will that deduct what you're paying, right? And then I think you're gonna have to start getting buy-in from some of the nonprofits as well, and twisting their arms, and making sure that this becomes a public priority for all of us to ensure that everybody's playing fairly, and that the level of playing field applies to you, whether you're residential, commercial, or nonprofit.
I agree that we really need to go and look at all these nonprofits, and see if they truly are nonprofits. You know, I worked with a couple of different groups, and we're truly nonprofit. I mean, we don't have payroll, we don't have strictly volunteer. So you need to make sure that everybody that is being charged taxes is getting what they're paid for, what they're paying for. But we also need to make sure that the money that we are exempting out of these people's organizations are really going for what their mission statement is. There's a lot of people that are nonprofits that are not nonprofits. So we just need better oversight, like with everything. We need to bring it down to the brass level, and clear the table of everything that's going on.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. Several candidates have mentioned their support or hesitation about examining the property tax exemptions for nonprofits, particularly on land that's not being used on mission. I was just wondering if I could hear from the rest of you on how you feel about that particular idea.
I believe it's a touchy subject. I believe that there are a lot of nonprofits who are struggling to survive, so that they actually do for-profit activities, which is recommended nationally for nonprofits to engage in activities to raise money, sometimes fee for service. And so when we look at these nonprofits and we say, you know, yeah, you're doing some for-profit activities, we want to discourage that, so we're gonna charge you more taxes, we just need to be really careful about that, particularly if those dollars that they are making actually do serve the mission with increasing the staff, maintaining the staff, and things of that nature. There are a lot of properties owned by nonprofits that are not in use at all, they're not inhabitable, and those properties we need to look at as what they are, public nuisance properties, blighted properties that need to be addressed by expropriation or otherwise.
A big part of the problem is, we don't have checks and balances. Everything that happens in New Orleans is kind of willy-nilly. Like, we're gonna do this, but nobody's gonna check it. We don't have any checks and balances at all, and I think that's the big problem. I know, a lot of people know that there are a whole lot of nonprofits that are not what they really say they are. But who's even going against that? So I think part of the problem is, there's no true checks and balances, and we really need to start holding people accountable. And we're not, we're just going with the flow. If we continue to go with the flow, we're gonna get the same thing we've been getting. So we really need to make some real-life changes, and some real thought processing changes, because we're not doing that right now. We're allowing the city to just go as it's going, and some people are in a good place. So they are not gonna say anything. But the people that are not in good places, they're too scared to say anything. So we really need to hold the city council accountable and do some real checks and balances.
Thank you. Well, I was originally, it's an important topic, but I'd like to kind of follow Oliver's themes of the night. So just so you know, I've been involved in a lawsuit for two years to try to get purchasing records, which are clearly public records, out of the city. You know, when we talk about the budget process and the budget town hall meetings, which we didn't even have this year, by the time we got to the budget town hall meetings, the budget, for all intents and purposes, was done. It happens mid-year. And in the past, when I tried to get departmental budget request records out of city hall, I've been denied because of deliberate process or something. And I just want, and we haven't heard much from the council speaking out on this kind of lack of transparency when it comes to public dollars. And I'd just like to hear from the candidates tonight, do you think that should change, and what would you do to change it?
I absolutely believe in openness and transparency. And when I'm on the council, if you make a request to the administration and you don't get it, you call me, and I'll make sure you get it. Because those are public records. We have a very strong public records law here in Louisiana. When I was an environmental law clinic student, I used the FOIA requests to get Clean Water Act information, to prosecute point source polluters on the Bogachita and the Chapunta, to help clean the Lake Pontchartrain Basin Foundation, and it's critical information for accountability. And that's what it's there for, and I wholeheartedly believe in openness and transparency. When NORD was going through its review process, as a member of the Public and Real Analyst Reg R, they were not having an open process. And I put my hand up in a meeting, and I said, I cannot take place and take part of this. This meeting is not public, and, you know, called him out on it. Former council member. So I'm totally for it.
When there's public dollars, I mean, I think, I think you're gonna hear pretty much the same answer from all of us. When there's public dollars at play, and people are asking for public information, the obligation is to provide that information. And I know you're shaking your head because you've been frustrated with the process, and obviously, there hasn't been enough support internally to make sure that documents that should be subject to public records requests. And Aileen is absolutely right. The public records law here in Louisiana is very broad, and leans much more in favor of production of documents than non-production of documents. And so what we have an obligation to do is to make sure, just as I said with the master of plan, just as I believe with other things, you have a rule, and you have a law, particularly when it applies to something that has transparency and accountability aspects to it, we ought to be applying it.
Before we even get to the public records, I look at the transparency level being broken at the stem of the system. You know, we have these, again, as I alluded to earlier, we have these city council meetings held in the afternoon when half the people in the city are working. We need to make sure that all these people have access to city council information at the start of the process, not when they're trying to chase something down. Absolutely, I would make sure that the public records become as transparent as possible. But if we do it at the stem, if we get it at the very beginning of the process, that will make a whole lot easier, maybe less need to chase these records out. You know, if we have these city council meetings, and, you know, in Boston, when I was up there the last time, we actually went around and held city council meetings in the neighborhoods, not in the city hall. We would hold them in various public buildings, which is, at least by Boston rules, is constitutional. I don't see any reason why we can't do it down here. Make it transparent all across the board from the stem up, and that way we'll be able to be as transparent with the city as possible.
Many of the folks in the room know that I too have gone through an issue with an elected official, actually, regarding a community development project where $1.7 billion disappeared. And a lot of folks still don't know where the money went. I happen to know where it went. But you have to, you can find this information oftentimes if you go to the right person to put pressure on them. The elected official is supposed to be the person that you put pressure on, who helps you get that information delivered from these departments. And too often, the elected officials are choosing who they give the information to. If you were someone else, you know, one of these prior elected officials who still pulls a lot of strings, you would already have the information you want. And I think that that is the main problem that we have, is a lack of equity, not just a lack of transparency.
Transparency has become a new buzzword. If I don't hear that every time somebody opening up, they're being transparent, that is, it's overkill now. The people that are already on the board, some of whom are running for office now, using the term transparency, but you still don't have the opportunity to get whatever it is you need, and they're on the board right now. So that is a real issue. Let's not use transparency if we are truly not gonna be about transparency. Enough is enough. Transparency is supposed to be for everybody, and we don't have that, as we see right here, this gentleman who just asked the question. So please, if you are not about transparency, stop using the term.
State public records request law specifies, I think, three days to respond to a request, five days to expedite the documents. The last request I did was to our city council person's office. It took them two and a half months to respond, after kicking it back two or three times for various reasons. And then it took about another 45 days for them to actually give the records available. When I got them, I requested emails from all present current staff, or for issue for a certain amount of time. And first of all, I got them, and they were in a big mass of just photocopied documents, and there was also a CD. And I started reading through these emails, and I realized on a certain topic, I'd see, you know, emails of one person, an email chain, emails from another, and they weren't matching up. Certain things weren't in one, but were in others. It just happened that since I requested some former emails, this was pulled off the server, and I go, that's why I had all kinds of emails that were missing. Come to find out, the people in our government who actually hold documents are the ones who get to decide whether or not they give it to you. And then there's nobody that can go back and check, and there's no way to actually ask for the ability to check to verify that you're getting what you're asked for. I think that's it. Does the association, did you guys?
First question will be, is that loud enough? Can everybody hear? No. All right, first question.
Go to the mic.
This is again, totally second question. Okay, by many accounts and nuances becoming the most unequal city in the United States in the last 12 years or so, our inequality has risen dramatically. What specific policies will you champion to reverse this trend in our city?
Well, I was troubled to read recently from a Times pick you that juveniles arrested in the city in 2013, 14, 15, 96% were African-American, 7% were African-American, 99% were African-American. That can't possibly be reflected with the people who are committing crime. If we're gonna plant our flag somewhere, make sure we're following the consensus grade about race-neutral policing policies, I think we really start there, and examine what we're doing right now.
I think what we really need to do is just get everybody on board with organizations like Step Up Louisiana, that has a three-point plan, Fight for 15, which is $15 minimum wage at the city level, Ban the Box, which is taking the checkbox off the employment application, and Equal Pay. If we start with that basic platform, we can grow further from there, and move our equity level up even a little bit, and then we can grow from there.
I don't believe I heard the whole question, I'm sorry, but...
How would you reverse the current trend of the growing gap between the haves and the haves and nots, inequality in our town?
Wow, that's a laundry list. The one thing I've been focused on is working to increase the DVE long pole. I believe that, you know, our $1.5 million DVE long pole should be increased to $150 million, because DVEs have historically been hiring the most vulnerable populations of our city. And I believe that we need to continue to grow our economy in a way that allows for the people who are being incarcerated to have opportunities. And I also would support banning the box and creating opportunities rather than jailing.
I totally agree with Step Up New Orleans, but I think for the most part, we don't wanna ever talk about the big fat pink elephant in the room, and that's the racial divide. We don't want, it's too uncomfortable for people. And until we really have a conversation about it, we're gonna continue to be in this insane world. We can't continue to do that. I have two brown sons, and I cater to black and brown children. And if you see some of the disparity, or even the fear that they have when they come in contact with other people, it's too much. So we need to start having those real uncomfortable conversations about race relations.
In New York City, on any given day, there are 34 locals for every tourist. In LA, it's 68. In New Orleans, it's three. So we are a city that has been diluted as much as you can dilute it. And the fact is that right now, we have a situation where New Orleanians work for tourism. And it needs to be the opposite. Tourism must work for New Orleans. Tourism must make our city better. Tourism must fund things, not the other way around. The focus should not be on entertaining, the focus should be on having the best city for the people who live here, so that people want to come here and see what great, ball of life we have. That's called running a city, not just pimping the city out for anyone who will give us a few bucks.
One thing I would do is bolster the DVE ordinance, and make sure that it is being followed and enforced on contracting, and require regular reporting on that, especially in the airport project. I think we need to do workforce development. When we look at Department of Public Works and Sewage and Water Board, we're contracting out a lot of those jobs, and that increases costs. And it's an opportunity to provide workforce development within those departments, and that's has been done in the past, and it can create good jobs, and also, you know, help the departments have institutional knowledge. We have 43% of our children living in poverty, and 58% of those families are raised by single mothers. You know, we need to work with the state legislature and make sure we get the equal pay legislation at the state level, and we need to do it here in the city as well. We have a first-ever youth services committee that I have helped create in the council, and I would propose creating a charter amendment to make a permanent Department of Youth Services to focus on coordinating... to focus on coordinating the services that we provide to the youth. I didn't hear the buzzer, I'm just going on. I have some more, but...
Thank you, everybody, for your input. This would be our closing statement time. So these statements and we'll start in the reverse order.
Well, again, my name is Eileen Archoplin-McLanskey and I'm so committed to running for this position that I left my job on the city council as a staffer to make sure that I didn't have any conflicts. I'm doing this because I want to make the city a better place for my children and all children. When I saw, you know, how the city is working and learned through many years of working in the council, I felt that when the seat became open, I had a call to duty and I wanted to fill it. I'm doing this just to fulfill that call to service and I would appreciate your support in the community because that is what makes the council strong. Because where there's a will, there's a way and the people, the voters, provide that will and just keep going on and on. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you guys for coming in, thank you for actually letting us have an issue specific forum for once. It's been great to actually talk about real issues. I look at things as simply as, you know, the answers are simple, the problems are simple, the willingness to solve them has to be there. And a good example is figuring out why Hollygrove floods. Talked all day about catch basins, but no matter if you bother to look at the back of the neighborhood, you realize that 50 years ago, someone built a railroad track that's elevated and acts as a levee. I mean, okay, it's there now. This, you know, everything about the city is not that hard and the fact is, we just have to be willing to solve it. I'm willing to solve it, I propose the solutions, I innovate, I actually get my hands dirty and that's what we need. And I'm running simply to be your employee and to do what needs to be done on behalf of you and that's what we need on the council and that's what we need in government in
Again, my name is Toye Washington Kendrick, I'm number 63 on the ballot. I am strictly here for change. I have no agenda when it comes down to anything, no agenda, but I do want to serve and this here has truly been an enlightening experience, to say the least. But with that being said, I am a champion for people, I am the voice for the underdog, I have always been the voice for the voiceless and I want to continue to do that, but with your help and with your support. So again, I'm number 63 on the ballot.
Hi, thank you for being here, thank you for the invitation. This is indeed a historic moment for the Carrollton neighborhood, you know, we should definitely give all of ourselves a round of applause because this is truly, for many reasons, a historic moment for the Carrollton neighborhood, seeing all of these neighborhood associations working together and engaging candidates the way that you all are engaging us. I am also a champion for change and I am typically the person who is looking for those tough solutions that not many people have insight to and need to be educated on as we look for a more sustainable New Orleans. Thank you.
Thanks again for having us. It really is, it was great to be able to discuss real issues that affect District A and in particular Carrollton. Again, my name is Dan Rang, number 61 on the ballot. And the reason I left Boston was because Boston became gentrified. And the reason I kind of landed in New Orleans is because New Orleans hadn't been gentrified. Still had that patchwork of neighborhoods with that slight bleed over of culture that ran through, whether it be a crawfish boil, whether it be music in the streets. I started to see gentrification start to take over and that's what spurred me to run. I'm a community guy, I've always done community things and so I decided to step up one level and see if we can get the community aspect into the government and make it all better.
Good evening, thank you. My name's Joe Geruso, I appreciate everybody being here, their attention tonight to Ken and to the moderators, also for the issue-oriented debate. I have not yet developed my plan on attacking squirrels that we're reading so much about lately. But what I have developed is putting New Orleans and our neighbors first. And it was discouraging to me yesterday, as I was actually campaigning and saw Dan yesterday in his neighborhood, to see a family, friends who said they were leaving the city of New Orleans because they're tired of things being broken. They're tired of not having the police answer when they call. They're tired of their neighbor's car being broken into. They're tired of streets and infrastructure not working for them. And I pledge to you that one of the things I wanted to do for you is to make sure that things work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.